The privilege has just been...
Mr. Storrock, I try to pick the best two for the most difficult sessions.
Oh, here you go. Oh, my gosh. See, now it looks like you're biased, so, you know...
I'm biased toward the group.
For the old members.
For the veterans.
The veterans, thank you. Thank you, Megan. Dr. Dockery? I think we're ready to...
Okay. If I might set the stage?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. I was gonna just make a few comments. First of all, the policies around student discipline, I mean, we can't minimize how important these are to our schools. And I believe there was a lot of progress. I know there was a lot of work done on this last year. I think I came, I was kind of coming into the picture toward the end of the conversation around some of these changes. We may not have gotten everywhere every board member wanted to go, but I think there was significant and meaningful progress that was made last year. There's nothing more important that our principals do than ensure that our schools are safe, and I believe our principals do a great job with that. Do we have our circumstances that happen occasionally? Yes, we do, because we have 185,000 students. But in the scheme of things, I believe our principals do a great, great job in keeping our schools safe for everyone involved. As we contemplated changes for the 14-15 school year, we put together a committee of principals, and along with these two great people at the end of the table, I think we had a wonderful committee. We have three of our high school principals. I know they're gonna be introduced in just a minute through our great high school principals here with us today. I thought there was some very interesting and engaging conversation, very forward-thinking. So I think the process was good, and I think every year, because there are changing conditions. I think this is something, obviously, we have to look at on an annual basis, and we'll keep working to get it better. But I think that what you'll be presented today, I think you'll be pleased with, and knowing that our individual, our leadership at the campus level who are responsible for this had a say in the direction we're gonna be recommending today. And they were very good about getting input from their colleagues. So while it was a committee process, you know, all of our principals had a voice in some of these recommendations that you'll see today. We approached it with, from these three different points that I think that we were trying to accomplish, and that is looking at discipline from an intervention mindset, just like we do in academic intervention, looking at it more from an intervention perspective, and I think Dan and Kim are gonna talk about that. We know we have to get out ahead of, we must reduce our disproportionality. That's a national, we're hearing more and more about that. There's some actually, some state laws that are being contemplated around that as well. And furthermore, we felt like we must reduce the time out of school. We're an educational organization, and to the extent we possibly can, we need to mitigate how many days of school children are missing. So I believe the committee did some great work. I'm very proud of the recommendation that'll be recommended to you today, is for you to contemplate. And then finally, whatever decisions are made moving forward, we recognize that we need to do a lot more training with our campus-based leadership, our assistant principals and principals moving forward, so that we have consistency with the implementation. So I'm gonna turn it over to these great folks to walk through the presentation, and I think at some point, we may even have some of our principals to answer some questions, should you have them. I don't know who's starting.
Great, I'm gonna start off.
Okay, Dr. Dockery.
So, as Dr. Garza said, it was a great group. We had principals at all three levels, high school, middle, and elementary. One of the things that was apparent throughout was Dr. Garza and Mr. Paris were at every meeting, and they were dialoguing with the principals. Grady and Dana, Grady Carlson and Dana Scanler were at every meeting, Mary Ann Panarelli and Clarence Jones were at every meeting, principals were at every meeting. And so it was really a great group of people thinking. I think Dana brought data that surprised the principals in looking at not just the hearings office data, but the suspension data around disproportionality. It was a bit of a surprise to some of the folks, because you only know what you know with your own data, and you don't know what else is going on throughout the district. So it was a, they were excellent meetings. I think that we did ask Teresa J., Teresa Johnson from Chantilly, Jane Lipp from South County, and Jay Pearson from Marshall High School to be here, because they had been in deep discussion about what would it mean to keep more kids at school, because that's what they all want to do. At the middle school level, they went back and they put dots on priorities, they had this constant dialogue. So I feel like there's a lot of ownership of what we're bringing you today. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Paris to talk about how we started with our assumptions.
Thanks, Kim. And to Dan's point, Kim and I know we have to be very crisp and precise with our language, because I have to believe, looking at your agenda, you're gonna do global warming next. Is that, am I clear on that? As Kim said, we started with our group, and the first thing that we did when we convened is that we looked at some trends that the hearing office had provided. We did go nationally to look at some research around disproportionality. And when we looked at our data sets, you know, we saw some things that showed progress. We saw, you know, overall since 2006, the number of hearings, number of referrals to the hearings offices have been cut from about 1,100 to 600. So there were some things in there that we were proud in our data set. There were some other things around disproportionality, which a lot of our, a lot of districts across the country struggle with, that we looked at our data set and we said, and the amount of time, as Dr. Garza said, kids out of school, there's stuff we can do better with. So in our group, after we looked at that, we said, all right, it would probably be good to start with a shared set of beliefs around this work, to get our, you know, to use that as our beginning to take this on. And the four that we come up with are bulleted for you up there, about believing that all kids can achieve success if we scaffold successfully for that and have supportive systems in place. The response to instruction tiered set of intervention is a process that most schools are familiar with, but we felt like it needed to be built out a little, with a more detail, with an effective model for impacting behavior. We felt that it would be important in this process for all of the school stakeholders to have a role in this, that would include our departments and our cluster support, and even building off the working conditions that talk about input from teachers, about how supportive that they feel in the classroom. And we believe that if we implemented a comprehensive model around the response to instruction mindset to student conduct, that we would see a reduction in the overall suspensions and recommendations for expulsion, and ultimately reduce the gap around disproportionality. So a brief review into what an RI approach, and I did try to correct the slide, it was a little bit hard to read, I got a few pieces of feedback around that. But if you operate in a tiered system of supports, the first support is that which occurs in the classroom. So you wanna serve the broad swath of kids' needs, differentiating for that by providing the best possible product that you can in the classroom. And we have tons of initiatives, a lot that Kim Shop has started, school work that they've done organically on their own around responsive classroom and a number of other approaches that have had success. You all as a board and as staff, we've also gone back around intervention and say, hey, every school should have a tiered system of support, which we've built out pretty effectively for academics. So if you go into schools, most schools have an intervention period, most schools have a way that they could say, when kids struggle in academics, this is how we respond. If you take a larger view, and I'm looking at what we've seen in the working conditions and things that are just obvious to me when you take the feedback, is that there are other arms that require responsive approaches, specifically around student behavior and conduct, and the social and emotional health arm. So I'm very confident that both the RI approach and doing something to support kids around these other arenas will be things that will come out within our strategic planning process. So as we went into this mindset, we said, with the pyramid of interventions, what changes could we make to strengthen those around student conduct and behavior?
So we're really gonna talk about three buckets, similar to the tiers that Dan was talking about, but instead of school-based, and then more intensive and more intensive, our buckets are around things that can happen at the school level, things that principals can use with discretion and work with the superintendent's office, and then things that are kind of required to work with the superintendent's office. And those are the three buckets that we're gonna be talking about today. So the first one are school-based interventions, and we know that intervening strategically can reduce suspensions and referrals to the hearings office, and that onsite interventions in the context of the school, with teachers providing the assignment and supporting the student, is the best behavioral intervention. And so we do have an increased focus on that, if you go to the next slide, for 2014-15. Increased focus on intervention, it's reducing the number of mandatory sanctions to allow more discretion at the principal level, and limit suspensions for violations which are not being referred to the division superintendent to a maximum of 10 days. So in the past...
Five days.
Five days. In the past, it read 10 days. And so now, the most that a principal can suspend is for the five days, and depending on the context, those five days could be in the alcohol and drug area, they could be, and they could be in in-school suspension as well. And so we'll be talking about some of that as we go through. One of the things that this does is if you look at our data, principals usually suspend for short term in a range of 1 to 5, and so this aligns more with our practice. In the past, our policy says up to 10, but they didn't do that, so we just are aligning this with our practice, for those things that are discretionary at the school level. Now, in a referral to the superintendent, which is that second level, the SRNR indicates that the principal shall or may make a referral to the division superintendent, again, discretion at that level. In the past, the language read, "Make a recommendation for reassignment or a recommendation for expulsion." So that language no longer exists, and that's language that caused a lot of angst for parents, because we rarely expel. And there are times where kids, for safety reasons, move to another location. But just removing the language expulsion takes down the level that my child is going to be kicked out of the school system. And also, it allows us to look at, when a principal has some very clear things, because they know the context that the behavior included, occurred in, they can say in their recommendation, "My recommendation is that there should be a consequence and this student should be reassigned, or this student should come back to us," but it allows the principal to take context into the recommendation to the superintendent's office. Going forward, again, you'll see that most of the school base, most misconduct can be successfully addressed at the school level. Reteaching interventions and limited use of suspension. Referral to superintendent at principal discretion is the mid-level, and they may refer. And then the last, there are a limited number of offenses which require a referral. So we're gonna go through what those typically look like. School-based responses may result in a suspension for up to five days, and again, that can be within the in-school suspension arena. And this is in a case where there is a very serious or multiple prior interventions have been initiated, they may suspend up to 10 in the regulations, but the, it would have to, it would have to fall into that pattern of repeated, pattern of repeated behavior. Again, at school-based responses, these are behaviors such as cheating, fighting, being disrespectful or defiant, possessing matches, fireworks, lighters, being under the influence of drugs or alcohol, possessing over-the-counter drugs, alcohol, and inhalant violations. So those are the ones that principals have discretion and can use, the 1 to 5.
So just to review, when the group met, the first change that we looked at, that we wanted to make sure was reflected in SRNR, was to give, if we wanted most of the concerns to be handled at the school level, to give the principal and the school-based leadership and the schools themselves a broader swath of discretion to operate, because they know the kids best. So we made those changes. The second thing that came out from the group is a recommendation, right from the very beginning, was to look at how we can build out on an enterprise level some strategies and approaches around intervention in this area that would be helpful. So there were two specific things that came forward. One was about putting additional resources in the school to coordinate and help with intervention, and this is different, I would say, in the past, having been a principal for a long time, in the past, we have had funding around in-school programs. And most of that was around folks to monitor the room. And I think what this approach is, goes beyond that, is this would be a position that would help actually with the implementation of intervention and driving that bus to work with the school leadership, the counseling department, and things like that. So this is a little bit higher level and deeper treatment. Another suggestion that came out, which is something that haven't been around for a while, that I found to be very useful in my practice, was the addition of a records review to support school-based intervention. So way back in the day, when we were into four regional offices, we did support records review, then as a principal, you had the discretion to be able to bring forward students that you worked with and families that you had worked with on a repeated basis, to do two things. One, to kind of present, to say, this is how we've scaffolded for the student's success, and also to hear back from the family if there were other things that they felt that they needed to support the student's success. It was a good opportunity for a dialogue, and another chance to review in a more formal kind of way, the options that are available to all kids on a voluntary basis. So part of the recommendation, the changes into SRNR that we've built into the document, is a reference of records review, which would be at the principal's request. Specifically, we would target those students that had repeated conduct issues, and it would be a dialogue between the cast member, probably a representative from the hearings office team, the parent, and the school, to affirm that the school is taking the appropriate action to support the student's success, and that the parents were responsive and understood what was available to them.
So one of the things that this also allows us to do is, we often have trouble with fidelity issues across the county, and that this was an attempt to say, we must have dialogue around if this is, if our disproportionality, which our data shows us, is around the disobedience, the defiance, then are all schools responding in the same way? And are all schools having a dialogue around intervention strategies before they recommend for further, for further action? And so this was an attempt to say, we have not been good in fidelity, and so by putting in a records review at the cluster level, it would increase the conversations that we're having, just like we do data dialogues, we need, around academics, we need a data dialogue around behavior as well.
This came up in the discussion. Because we identified in some cases, we may have a principal that there's a preponderance of these kinds of situations, or cases, where maybe the principal might not be aware of some other division-wide support that could be mobilized. You know, some just know who to call. And so the cluster offices, then, if there's a situation with a student that, where we've had repeated issues, they may be able to mobilize some support that had not been previously initiated. Or counseling with the parents, because a reassignment to another school that better suits or meets that child's needs may, could be accommodated at this level on a permissive basis, without going through hearings office, without doing all of that, but more as a, you know, as a collaboration around, let's work with the parent to find maybe a better setting. So it gives us a lot more options to respond, whether at that campus or maybe to a more appropriate setting.
Thanks, Karen. So, a little more detail on the records review. So go back to make sure they were on the same page, that there was three basic things that within our internal working group, we felt could really help us do a better job with our student outcomes. One we talked about is increasing the level of discretion at the school. Two was building out the intervention process on a more enterprise level across the system. And the third one was more clarity of purpose around our data sets, so that we could actually spur these conversations, to do some return on investment about which schools were getting the best results with which practices. So the records review would provide us an opportunity to kind of look across clusters and across schools, so that we can learn from those approaches, and those that work the best, build them out across the system.
So that moves us to the second category, referred at principal discretion. And this, again, are potentially more serious, and would result in interventions, whether they're school, home, or central, and they may result in out-of-school suspension or a referral to the division superintendent. But the language is much more "shall" is removed, and "may," so that you can put the context of the behavior in. And if you look at the next slide, you can see some examples of violations in this category. And so, again, this gives you the context to say, is this gang activity, the wearing of certain clothing, or is this gang activity more egregious and, you know, has assault in it? So it allows the principal to look, instead of just any gang activity, what is the context of it? We wanna be tight on certain things and have immediate response, but on others, we need to make sure that we're looking at the context in which it occurred. So required referrals on the next are very serious offenses, and they may result in a suspension of 10 days and shall result in a referral to the division superintendent. In the past, this said "shall" result in up to 10 days, and "shall" result in referral to the division superintendent. So in this case, you could say that the student needs to go forward to the division office, to the superintendent's office. I'm going to do a five-day suspension that is going to be at AOD, Alcohol and Drug Education, and then the student can return to in-school suspension while they're waiting for their appeal to come forward. So your focus is on getting the school in a building with teachers at all times.
I think it's important on that to note, that the referral, even under the required referrals, it's just saying a referral to the division superintendent to the, for a hearing. It doesn't say, as I think you had all talked about, even in a form, it doesn't say a recommendation for expulsion. Now, expulsion could be factored into it at the division level, and that will help us be a little bit more consistent as well, because there's gonna be a few of those. But I wanted to make clear that what it's gonna say in the documentation to the parent.
Exactly. It is "shall" result in a referral to the division superintendent, removing the language of expulsion or reassignment, because that's gonna be talked about within, at the hearings office, and that helps us look at consistency around those actions across the school system as well. The last one is expedited review is continued for first-time simple possession and extended to first-time use of marijuana, so as long as it was not on school property during the school day or during a school-sponsored activity. So one of the things that that helps mitigate is, I know that you look at cases where a student makes a mistake on a Friday night over Thanksgiving break, and it was not a risk for the students or other students at that time, but it's still saying that use, possession is expedited review first time, and first-time use is expedited if it's not on school grounds during the school day.
Also, in the actual language, it does refer that the student need to stay, be in in-school suspension at the high school level during the process of this expedited review. But we also looked at the data, and I don't remember the exact number, but the largest percentage of the cases going forward to expedited review were going right back to school. So if, so that's what compelled us to keep this in, because it seemed to be working, but keep them in school in a setting separate from other students. And, by the way, it's important to note that in that case, the, our program would actually be required as well. I just forgot the name of the program.
The AOD program, yes.
Yes, and under both of those circumstances, the program would be required.
And so those required referrals are the sexual assault at the secondary, assault on staff causing injury at the secondary, possession of the statutory weapon, and possession of machete, switchblade, knife, use of any weapon, and possession or use distribution of marijuana, synthetic marijuana, controlled substance imitation marijuana imitation controlled substances. And those are the required. As we always do this year, we bring you the updates that come from our legislation. And so this year, they added language around smoking devices, such as nicotine vapor products, alternative nicotine products, electronic cigarettes, and hookah pens, which none of us knew what they were, but John Foster did. So we got a lesson on hookah pens, and that is an addition. We also look at, what are the most frequent calls that we get? And we got a lot of calls about the need for a note to leave school early. We got calls from parents, Clarence Jones Shop takes those, and we get calls from schools. So rather than having that left open, we just clarified it in the SRNR. We also, based on our federal regulations and our collecting data, statement of a need for principal to investigate and report bullying and harassment. We also have the ability for a principal to take an action other than referral to the superintendent, when a student self-reports and voluntarily turns in a weapon. So in the case that the student arrives at school and they've discovered that something is in their backpack, if they go directly and report, and it's a self-report, then the principal has discretion on how they will handle that. This one on the agenda page needs to be changed, because it says is a process change, but actually, the process for the letter of agreement in the SR, is the same, it's just that it's included in the SRNR, so it's more transparent about what we do. So it's just, this language is included in the SRNR now.
So in summary... So in summary, the group got together, we established a kind of a shared sense of beliefs, we looked at the data sets, we made commitments to three different areas, to build out an intervention mindset to the work, to look at our data carefully, to drive our improvement, and to build out more fully the intervention approach. And we went back through the SRNR document, as we do every year, to look at changes to legislation, to make sure that it was incorporated, and we wanted to make sure that the document reflected those belief changes that were recommended. So we believe the document that's presented to you today does a better job of reflecting commitment to early targeted school-based intervention. We believe that it expands the principal discretion, we believe that it reduces time out of school, we believe that it avoids a record of recommendation for expulsion unless there is a final determination, which we believe will reduce stress in the process, and provides for a range of school cluster and central office involvement in interventions.
For that fourth bullet, that's the one where, if you're on the common application, and you have to say, have you ever been recommended for expulsion? That is removed, because we don't, if they're recommended to the hearings office, then the final, there are only six kids that are recommended for expulsion, they won't have to answer that on the common app.
I guess, last words on the, this process, I think that everybody who was in that room was, felt positive about the direction we were taking, but I think everyone there also knew that this work wasn't done, right? That this is such an important process, that we need to look at it every year and work as a team to determine, how can we make improvements to the outcomes with students? Because this is one of the most important things that we do. So that's what we have with us. We'll turn it back over to Dan and Kathy.
One more thing I want you all to talk about, because this does have a request for the additional position at all of our high schools, comprehensive high schools, our large comprehensive high schools. We believe that position's important, because our principals have really come, they've really, I think, been very collaborative in this process, they've had some great recommendations, they've been very forward-thinking. But I think to do this well, they're gonna need this additional resource at the high school level. In addition to that, there's been some conversation with our middle schools, that there may be occasion where they'll need to call their high school counterpart, because they may have a circumstance where they have a student that needs in-school suspension, but they don't have the resource. But they could utilize a resource at their high school, assuming that there's, you know, space for them to do that at the high school level. So I think there's a way for us to kind of monitor this next year. We wanna see these folks as behavior intervention specialists, that gives us an opportunity to really do some in-depth training with someone at all of our high schools. We have some great models in our own division that we've not been able to take to scale, because we don't have someone who champions and owns it at the, at the high school and campus level. So I know that, you know, all of our resource is precious, I think that's $1.8 million is what we're contemplating there, certainly something that we would monitor over time, but we're asking principals not to suspend students, to keep them in school. to suspend students, to keep them in school. They need the resource to get that done.
So one of the things, yeah, and I think they're prepared to answer that, but one of the things that Teresa Johnson did was really summarize for her colleagues that this is not a person to sit in a room with kids with their heads down. So she summarized by saying that this person, teacher slash counselor, will belong to a cohort with others of the same position so that they can look at the practices across the county. Again, fidelity so that one school is not doing something different from another. The cohort will meet regularly to standardize the processes. They want consistency too. This person will receive training in behavior management, restorative practices, and relationship building. This person will be used to track discipline data in the school and support PBIS as well. In addition, students who are suspended for any reason may be placed in, in-school support for part of their out of time at the principal discretion. And this will not be traded out for anything else, but it will be used for this support so that you, so that we can support kids being in the building, receiving this support. And I also met with middle school principals, and we had started the RBI, which is the Restorative Behavior Intervention Program. And they have been using that a lot, which is a three-day program to get the kids in a place where they're supported for some reteaching and then back to school. So we're to meet with them on May 21st to see whether we continue it in the same form or take those resources to help them in the same thing of keeping kids in school.
Then I know it was brought up earlier about the school, the home-based support we provide for students that are out, you know, out of school suspension pending a result of the hearing office. That might be mitigated this year by some of the changes that were made, but we will still need a support for students that will be in those circumstances. And where we might be able to redeploy, I know you're analyzing that right now.
Right.
But we do have some elementary situations where we really need to intervene early and fix and respond to those circumstances. I know Kim mentioned it earlier, you asked our elementary principals, we have some real challenges there. So it would be my recommendation, if we're able to pull back some of those resources, we have a very significant need that we need to, we need to intervene and do something to fix that early on so we don't have those behaviors persisting throughout their school career. So that's just a point.
I did tell my, the high school folks over there that I was going to take them to visit these out of control five-year-olds so they could see what was coming. But I, I think that one of the, it is, it is sad, but I think that one of the, the important points of this is that those numbers are increasing. We have to get on top of that early. And when we look at overarching, we have a large commitment by the, all of the principals to say, we want to keep all the kids that we can. And this was a great outcome in this, in this work.
I want to make, ask two broader questions, and then I want to just kind of confirm where we are time-wise with everybody. But the two broader questions is, and I'd asked earlier, Kim and Dan on a few, she was here with you. One was, how does it relate to our previous work and the task force and our, because there are a number of un-executed items, things that we were still in discussion, debate on, et cetera? And are any of those addressed here, just to get that bigger issue out on the table? And the other is, you referenced kind of broadly how states are getting involved, and we know the state of Maryland in particular is getting involved, and wanted to see if their particular approach, or if you see any of those kinds of things happening in Virginia, or something, anything else like along those lines we should be aware of? And then I'll go to my colleagues, because we have, I have Schultz, Evans, and Strauss to start off.
So one of the things that Mary Ann and I did last year, and then as an update mid year, is to look at where we were in the recommendations. Some of them were for the process and some of them were for the school board. So we really looked at the process ones. The things that we wanted to accomplish, that we looked at at Dr. Garza, is having kids out of school less. And that was one of the things that we addressed in reducing the amount of days that a principal could suspend. That was on, on that, that group's work. The other was having a brick and mortar solution that when you are suspended, not having to be out of a building. That was part of the work that we worked on. The other part of the cluster review is that disproportionality can't be addressed until we have these honest conversations, that we need to be looking at this data and we need to be cognizant that across the district, we were doing different things. So adding that cluster review, the records review, was particularly to look at disproportionality. The other thing that was addressed was in the special education and that we had mandated MDR training that had to be, I had to check with Mrs. Johnson, because it was to be completed by March 27th. So we started and created a eLearnIt module, and all teams at the school level were to be retrained on MDR. And that was a continuation of that work. In terms of Maryland, we have been watching their legislation. Mary Ann is on their website frequently. We did that very specifically when we were creating the parent guide, and we looked at Anna Rundles. And in terms of changes and movement, it's very similar. And I don't know if, Mary Ann, if you have anything except that we are following their legislation closely to see if it has anything that will inform some of our next work.
I'm going to add to that real quickly. We identified that we need to revise some of our reports. It was interesting from what we heard from our principals is that some of the reports around disproportionality, it's not really readily available, reports at the campus level that shows that information. And so part of it's just awareness and bring it to, bring it to their awareness through reports. So we're working on that. The second thing is training. We need to have a lot more training, and I think I mentioned that earlier, around consistency, parent notification. Some of that we identified as, a lot of it's a training issue, so we'll work, we'll work on that. And then we hope to keep the committee still working throughout next year, and so we can reflect back to see how things are working throughout next year.
Principals?
Yes.
And Dr. Garza, in general, the timing on the SRNR, when we have to have it approved by, just to put this into the board action framework?
We're pushed on all of this, I will tell you that. But with the budget being kind of front and center right now, being adopted on May the 22nd, I don't think we have any choice but to figure out a way to get all this done in June. So looking like this would be new business on June 5th. And then for final action on June the, was it 22nd? 27th. That's going to really make it tight for production purposes, I know that, but we're going to have to help with some outsourcing or something to get it done. I don't think we have any other choice.
June 26th. Okay. And with that, Ms. Schultz, then Evans and Strauss, the first three up.
So I know we're not supposed to mix religion and government, but hallelujah. I feel like we got a little Jesus in this room, finally. I'm so happy. Congratulations. And I have spent, come on, we need a little lightness. Been doing this all day. First of all, I definitely want to thank both of you. We've spent a lot of time talking about this, and not just leading up to this, but a lot of time. And Dan in particular, because you're, this isn't necessarily your bailiwick, but the time that you've spent discussing this and disaggregating this has really been very, very helpful. A couple of questions. On the review of the division superintendent, because I know, and we're talking policy level, so we're not going to talk specifics, but right now, the division superintendent does not see cases before they come to the school board. Is that addressed in this?
Typically, what has happened is the deputy superintendent has been the superintendent's designee. So typically, the deputy superintendent has been the one that's, you know, managed and supervised and worked very closely with the hearings office.
But I mean, in terms of the cases that actually make them before the board in closed session, they haven't come to you as the division superintendent before they're coming to us. And I'm wondering if there is now an intervening step where you get the case in this referral process now before it comes to us, or no?
Well, there's a caveat to that. I will say, and Dana can correct me, I have been informed, and I do meet with Dana before board meetings, so I know what's coming to you, but the decision's already been made. Okay? So do you see the distinction I'm trying to make? Okay. The current policy, the current regulation is written now, does still have, goes to the superintendent, and we can talk about whether or not that still resides with the deputy superintendent as the designee. But that really hasn't changed here. I just, there's going to be very, I think there's going to be fewer that will actually come to that level.
So there's not, nothing changes in terms of the referral process to the board as a result of these changes? Okay, that's number one. Number two is, can we go to the screen that had the, the cluster? Where are we in the presentation?
The recitation.
Mm-hmm. No, you're, so further. Okay. So this looks to me like a recommendation that really the parent or the student or the cluster can initiate. But is there not, in that intermediate, intermediary step of the 10 days, going from the five days to the 10 days? I mean, when does the cluster become involved? I guess that's the, kind of the, the big question is, is what, what we don't see, and that's been a little bit of the angst of, of the board at times, is, you know, that it, it sort of seems to skip a step? And so, I mean, I see it a little bit more clearly here, but can you, can you elaborate on this part?
I'll start, and then I can give you an example that happened today. So at the school level, there's been a lot of, a lot of work with an elementary student that is having a great deal of difficulty. At a point where the school had run out of options, they, in the past, they might have recommended for an expulsion or reassignment. But instead, they made a contact with the cluster office, and they contacted us to say, what resources aren't we looking at that we need to look at to address the student? So then we'll have a meeting to say, do they know about X, Y, and Z? And how are we going to support the school? So as opposed to going straight to a recommendation to the office, it is, these are around behaviors that we're still working on. We want to have a dialogue at the cluster office level. Why is this important? Because a lot of these issues are bigger than school issues, and we need to get the county involved around families, teams. And we need to get, we don't do therapy for parents. We need to get the resources around this other, the child. And so that's kind of an example of the cluster getting involved to look at resources for the child.
So in some cases, it's an option, depending upon where you are in the, what level in the SRNR draft, this is an option available to the principals to request a records review, or the cluster office could do that. At the elementary level, sometimes it's very explicit in the SRNR that this is required before a recommendation for a hearing with the superintendent's office.
And I, and I guess, I guess that's the one, that's the one thing that I, so I think I understood it correctly. It, it seems as if we're back to, the clusters become involved if the principal decides to involve the cluster. And I'm not sure that's necessarily, I mean, I think that warrants.
I do believe that Dan uses this language a lot. We need business rules for this process. And there are several things in this that we have put on our list, business rules for this process. And I think that's what you're asking for, so that it's not different across the division.
Right. Because I can see that being, you know, optional, and then either the option's never taken or it's taken, you know, liberally in one school and not so much, you know, so I, I see that, my early warning detection system is going off on that one.
So let me just add a little more context with that. I think you've probably gotten the right answer from it. Is it, looking at our data set in a retrospective sort of way, there are probably 50 to 60 cases that come out every year of repetitive behavior that would warrant this kind of action. If it's at the elementary, it's pretty much directed within the document before you would bring a kid forward, you would have implemented this process. Clearly, I mean, what the school-based folks are saying and the cluster folks are saying is, look, you, you look at your data sets to determine which of these approaches are working the best. And, you know, as someone that's been around long enough to having been involved with this in the past, two things happened there that would be helpful to me as a school-based person. I would present my case to say, this is how we've scaffolded for the success of the kid at school. And at times, the, the cluster assistant superintendent, the regional superintendent would say, hey, did you think about this? This is something else you might try. It was a good idea for me. We would take it back. We would add it into the intervention sequence. The other thing would happen, sometimes the assistant superintendent would say, wow, you guys have gone above and beyond. It seems to me you've done everything that you can to support the success of this student, and then ask for the parent to say, do you have other ideas of what the school can do? And how can you help us, help your child respond to this the way that's intended? So both of those outcomes were, were positive. And I think that if we do this and we expect it to happen, if we watch our data set and we start seeing the numbers of kids that are referred in those categories dropping, then we know that this process is helpful. If it doesn't have any impact, then I think we look at it again next year and say, do we do something different? Do we become more directive? And how would that work?
The other thing, and I think the principals can speak to this, is that when you have repeated behaviors going on, sometimes you're really struggling to get the parent to come in and be part of the process. And so the records review does that without taking it to the next level, but a parent is involved in this work. And it's saying, these are the things that we have done, but the parent is involved at this level as well.
My, my concerns aren't only on the repeated behaviors, and I think that's maybe what made this slide stick out, because the board has received, you know, cases where it's the student's first infraction. And though, that's where I feel like there hasn't been a trip mechanism. Just a couple of other quick things. I appreciate the fact that you're talking about putting money into the schools for, for positions, but I have to say, from a budget perspective, I don't know where, I don't know, there are some schools that are already doing it without additional funds, or they've traded the funds to get the people that are necessary, is one. Two, by directing kids back into the classroom, we're not going to be spending money on homebound. We're not going to be spending money on, on ALCs. We're not going to be spending, spending money on AIM. So I, I see that the money is just going to move from one pot to another, not necessarily that we need more.
So I would, because we're working on a budget answer for you that you should have tomorrow.
Okay.
There are two things that we really need to separate. One is that the need for ALCs and AIM will not go away. We have a number of non-traditional students that will never be able to be on a regular school campus. There are some that are for safety reasons, and there are others that can't tolerate that school. However, what we will be working with Susan on, and Mary Ann was actually working with Kristin Michael all, all day today, is there should be money coming back from the out-of-school support. We took some of that at baseline, and then we have others to come back based on this recommendation. So we should have a budget answer around that amount so that Dr. Garza will be reducing the amount required.
Because I always want, I mean, we don't seem to talk about how much we save. We talk about how much things cost.
Yeah, and I think, I think we do need to monitor it, monitor it too, this next year. And the other thing I want to point out, yes, we do have a few high schools that have traded in positions to create a similar type of position. Those are few and far between. But these changes are so significant that I think the only way it's going to work, and furthermore, we've taken more and more of the flexibility away from principals as we've tightened up their budgets and increased class size. They have less flexibility in trading in positions and creating this. So in my estimation, and y'all agree with me or not, this is really an essential resource with regard to some of these changes that are implemented here.
So I'll use Chantilly. They did trade an IA position to have someone to supervise a room, sorry, Mr. Stork, but they don't have the ability to trade for that anymore. And that person was supervising the room instead of getting intervention, making engagement with the kids, and getting proactive with, you know, do we have a math team of math teachers that we need to do some more training with? So this person, she would say, is completely different resource that she'll be able to deploy.
Can you tell that we're passionate, we're both talking about something that we care a lot about? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This, this is, this is too, we've been doing this for too long. Other thing is, is that we're getting 100% of MDRs, you know, not causal, not causal, not causal. I hope that that MDR training that you referenced will show that, you know, there are special education. I mean, that's why we have the disproportionality of the students with disabilities, which is one of my huge concerns with this process, which hopefully this will mitigate. is one of my huge concerns with this process, which hopefully this will mitigate. And I hope that we never, ever make, you know, the news for a pop tart, or, you know, a piece of cheese stick, you know, formed into a gun. So, as long as we stay clear on all of that, this looks like we're headed in the right direction, and I'm very, very pleased. I think there are a couple of follow-ons, though.
And I understand, the questions are good, and we, the problem is, if we each take 10 minutes, we can just do the math. So, I know that, I'm just asking people if they can keep it to less than five minutes, that'll be helpful, so.
Is there more session?
Well, I'm, you know, look, I'm the meeting manager, I'm just asking you to be prudent and careful with your words and questions, so we can try to get out of here before 7:30. That's all. I mean, it's, in the end, I'll stay as long as anybody wants to stay. But if the objective for the meeting managers is to try to contain and move this along, then that's what I'm trying to do, as frankly, as politely as I possibly can, all right? So, Ms. Evans and Ms. Strauss. And I am timing it to try to give you some feedback as to how much time it's taking, that's all.
Thank you. And I applaud you for these efforts. I think that you're making substantial progress here, particularly on the time out of school. That's been an issue for so long, so I think that that's wonderful, and the increase in the AIA and the in-school suspension. I totally support adding these positions. I agree with you that these are critical to getting a handle on that, and keeping kids in school, and keeping, and keeping discipline in the classroom at the same time. So I think those are great additions. We've been trying to change that word expulsion for as long as I can remember, and so kudos to finding a way to call it referral rather than expulsion on the first round. That's, that's an important change, because I agree. The parents see the word expulsion, and they just go into brain freeze, and this, I think, will take that stress off of families. I also, I'm glad to see the discretion on the part of the principals being increased. I think that that's, that's a good change as well. I want to be sure I'm clear on this. When they refer to the superintendent, does this give them the leeway to just say straight out, "Here's what I really think should happen with this student. They should be reassigned. They should come back to me." Because that's been one of my frustrations, when I've seen these cases in the past where it's just, you know, "I gotta recommend this kid for expulsion," and there's, I always feel like I would love to have a conversation with the principal to say, "Well, what do you really think? You know, what do you really want to have happen with this student?"
You're exactly right. Even when there is a referral to the hearings office, to the superintendent, the hearings office, because they're required to do that.
Yeah.
There will be, in the form letter, it's an opportunity for the principal to say, "It is my recommendation, however, that this happen, that they come back to the school, or they be reassigned to another school."
I think that's a really important change, because, you know, I've talked...
And I believe that's explained on one of the slides.
Because I've talked to principals to say, "You know, I can take this kid back, you know, I'm fine." And then there are others that say, "Sorry, you know, this one just can't." And I think it's important that we know that going into it, so good. I'm glad to see that we're doing that. On the positions, you know, I certainly support the positions. If you can do it revenue neutral, that's great. If not, you know, I still think it's critical. Two other questions. One is on parent notification, which we have struggled with this for years, and we made some important changes last year. I continue to see situations that concern me, because it's not as consistent as I would like at the school level. I think that, you know, last year we said notify student parent, you know, attempt to notify, reasonable efforts to notify, as soon as practicable and before the written statement. I'm seeing that the only hard line there is before asking for the written statement, and I think that as soon as practicable has gotten lost, in a lot of cases.
I think we can get better there, but I do think it's a matter of training for our principals and our assistant principals. So I believe that the wording is where it needs to be, but we need a lot more training for our principals and our leadership teams, and what does that really mean? And I think we have some great examples this year we've learned from, and we can give them some good examples, and we can give them some good non-examples as we look at the training for next year.
And I think that's, that's good to know, because as we move forward, when you see a student who's been caught with marijuana, and you have them, you have them, and you have the evidence, to my mind, that's when you set them down, and you take away their cellphone, and then try to find the parent, you know, that's, that's the time to do that. So the more we can get the parent involved as early as possible, you know, once the danger's passed, once the evidence is, you know, not gonna be destroyed or whatever. So I'm glad to hear, and I'll be, I'll be very interested to see how that goes, and hopefully see more consistency and more fidelity to that improved parent notification piece as well. And then my last question, and I appreciate your work on that, Dr. Garza. My last question is, one of the, I think it was either unanimous or overwhelmingly supported by the SRNR task force, was to create an advisory committee regarding student discipline, that would be a community committee. Is that going to be one of your recommendations, or did you think about that or consider it? Or...
Okay, I might be wrong. My first reaction to that was absolutely not. I'm just gonna tell you my first reaction.
Okay.
We already have how many advisory committees? And I will tell you that we purposefully, and I think you all know, I'm interested in what people have to say. I'm interested in stakeholder, but I think that's our responsibility to get that feedback in many cases. I think we, as educational leaders, should be leading on this and getting input. So I just think, in terms of time, energy, I just think it, I think we can reflect good practice and keep listening and seeing where we could get better without having an advisory committee, quite frankly.
All right.
It's just a matter of time.
Well, I'm, I was happy, you know, I'm glad to have your view on that. I think that's something for us to ponder a little bit more, because that was a recommendation that we haven't considered.
And I think that goes to how many advisory committees the board has. I mean, because all those advisory committees are time that staff and, you know, we all spend in managing and working with them. And if those aren't reflective of the areas that you want advisory committees, or maybe not the priorities of the board, then I mean, that's where maybe there could be some conversation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. That was...
May I just say that I think Megan's probably gonna talk about second chance, and we got some brochure, got a brochure, which we've had Xerox, so I'm gonna pass this around. It's on Arlington Second Chance Program. Patty and Karen and I were at Wavy the other day, and they were talking about this, so I figured I would bring this.
Thank you. That was six and a half minutes. I now, I have, all of us pretty much are going to speak on this, so Ms. Strauss, then Darna Kofax, and McGlothlin are next.
Thank you. First of all, I think this is excellent. You've really, you've really worked hard, you've listened hard, and I really do like the collaborative process to try to get this to a better spot, and I think you've done it. Very pleased to see the adjustment that reflects what actually goes on in schools. So the five-day, because most, you know, most, most suspensions are short. I like the fact that however we, however we send out letters or questions that would happen to parents, so that the language is toned down, so that we don't start off with a panic. So I do like the fact that we've gotten around, and you may be recommended for expulsion. So I think that's, that's excellent. The use of the positions, at first I was picturing the scene in Hairspray, which I know that's not what we're about. Because we did try in-school suspension, and it turned out that the positions were not well-used. So I like the fact of your description of what they're gonna be used for, and certainly the wraparound services, because that's exactly what we want. Have we tried everything? We pulling in county services, anything that we know? Because we know at the staff level, you guys work very closely in providing supports for families, whatever it is. So I think this solidifies that. So, I'm very pleased with that. We're going to need a scorecard, so that we clearly understand the changes, what this means. And so then I have two specific questions. One is understanding for, I understand the expedited review remains as it was, and so a student who is in possession of drugs on school grounds, or a student who is using drugs on school grounds. So a student who is possessing drugs on school grounds, if it's a first possession, it still is the expedited review, but the expedited, no.
And Dana, I'm gonna let you, it's just for marijuana.
Ah, we don't have the discretion with some of the other...
That's what I thought.
Right. This is specific only to...
Just to marijuana. So if you're caught with anything worse, you're, you will go to the, it will go to the hearings office.
It will be a recommendation to the hearing, to go to the superintendent's hearings office.
Right, right. Okay, to see if there are, anyway, what we're gonna do with it. Okay. And use of marijuana on school grounds, first time...
Not expedited if it's during the school day.
During the school day, right.
Or to school activity.
Right, exactly. So you're still, you are still in more trouble if you are actually using marijuana even for the first time on school grounds. Right, okay. Then, I guess the other question is, I just want to make sure, in the end, that we understand where students stay at school while the hearing process is going forward, and exactly how that works, who are the kids who will get to stay on school ground? In other words, so that we aren't having kids away from school and teachers are...
So, we, last year there was an amendment made. We do call it the Moon Amendment.
Right, exactly. And that's right. And I'm seeing now how this works out.
And so we have had principals already use that during the school year. If this change, saying that you may recommend for the 10 days, it may eliminate that, but it still remains in there, and we had principals that used it this year in special circumstances.
Right. And then my question is, for the kids then who stay on school grounds or anything, is what will be the circumstance of, in other words, how will, will they be going back to their regular classes, or they will be in a situation where they're away from their peers? I mean, how...
So, it's both, depending on the circumstance. I think what the in-school allows us to do is, the principal can say, you know, "You need, there's a consequence, and you're going to be in in-school suspension."
Okay, got it.
Or, "While you're waiting for this, I want you to do the AOD, and then come back to your regular classroom while you're waiting that." And that's at the principal level.
All right. So it, so, all right, so there is discretion with that, depending on...
Is that something right? I'm just making sure that's their understanding.
Okay, that's the understanding. And then the other question I had is with, with a records review, if you get into a situation where, where you've done everything possible, the parents are called in, you've called in all the resources, and the parents, and the ultimate recommendation is, there's, they're really, we've got to find a better setting for this child, which means a different placement, but the parents don't agree. Then what?
At this level, it is a voluntary, but I think you can't force, it's not like you've gone up through the process and been reassigned. But this is coaching to understand the different settings or the different places that might be a good fit, so it is more in that category of understanding all of the resources available, and this is not working here, but why don't we try it here? But that's a conversation, not a mandatory. And if, if you continue not to get the response, you could take it up to the next level.
Okay, in other words, all right, so you try all of this, the student's behavior, either for whatever reason, the parents are not willing to sit down and talk, and it's really not working, then you can still recommend...
The cluster can move it to the next level.
Right, okay. All right, I think you've answered my questions, but good work. I think it's very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was a little over five minutes. Ms. Darna Kofax.
Thank you all. This is very good news for us. I think I, what I see here is a continuation of the dialogue that started last year, how you had stated to us during that time last year, that there, that this was a first step, and this is proof positive that you've listened, and that you've gone forward with so many of these recommendations, that I applaud you for doing this. And I know this is, and again, a continuation, and we will continue to improve, because I know that's what happens under, unfortunately, you're leaving, but under your leadership as well, sure.
Well, I do have to say that Dr. Garza and Dan Paris, we really got that great group of principals that would own the solutions that we needed to come to, so it was a strong group.
Yes, thank you. And I didn't direct it to you, but I know you were quite responsible as well, so, but thank you all. I really only have one question, and it has to do with this as well, on this records review. I guess I needed some clarity as to, because I think this is one where we all had concerns oftentimes, but, well, I don't even want to say often, but there have been a few times where we saw, where cases came before us, where we saw the student was not successful, and that it was a discipline problem that brought them before us, as opposed to where we felt there could have been an intervention in the school, because it was clear that that student was not achieving academic success, but it was really a discipline issue that came before us. So, I guess, have we thought about specifics with this records review, when you talk about the cluster level? And I, and I, you know, and I guess fidelity of implementation goes along with what I'm saying. And is that something that you have right now, or is that something you're continuing to work on? For instance, I guess, just to give an example, would be, if you're seeing that a student is not having academic success because of grades and discipline problems that aren't mighty, but are continual, how are they going to be identified? Like, how many infractions, and how is this gonna be recommended as far as to the cluster person?
So, this last six months has been a good eye-opener for me, that I think is helpful, right? In that now I've been able to see the whole process, right, from the board perspective, and having some background from, from the school point of view too, right? So, one of the things where Dr. Garza says, "It's a training issue around parent notification," right? Because I see that come up, and I see it, the way this plays out, you have other resources, you have security people, teachers, you know, that might be the first one to encounter some of these behaviors, so our training needs to be larger in scope. So, when you see it, then I think you can move and you can fix it. When I look at scaffold for intervention success, which I agree, needs to be built out more, it's not just academics, that kids show, they're struggling a lot of different ways.
Right.
Okay? That I've seen them, it come to the board enclosed, and I haven't been there, and knowing what my colleagues that are sitting over there have done, I know in the back of my head that there was a ton of intervention that went into, you know, supporting kids prior to them coming here. It doesn't show up in the written record necessarily, right? So I think this records review process is helpful in a couple of ways. I think your school-based people already pull parents in and go, "Hey, here's stuff that's available out here. This is what we've done at the school level to support your success, and if we can't get this turned around, this is going in a negative direction." And then a lot of times, parents, if they hear that enough from different people, and you build that relationship, they'll go, "Okay, let's look at some of these other options." In a records review, it just takes it up another seat level, right? And so sometimes you get the attention of the family, and there's times when you have to go back to the school to say, "Look, there are some things you need to do differently at the, at the school." So it does work both ways. Part of this is, and you need to go to the people that do this, just like we did this with the principals, right? And I think we're all trying to go to the same place, and have been wanting to go to the same place. We just, for lack of a real deep, prolonged conversation to get there, which we finally had, that I would want to sit down with cast members and flowchart this out, if we get affirmation that this is the direction that we want to go, to answer those kind of detailed questions. I think there's definitely agreement in principle that this is something that is manageable in terms of workload from the clusters, that it would be supportive to help us build out enterprise systems of support, right? But it would need further conversation, and so if we go this direction, Kim and I's hope would be to leave a plan in place that would say, "These are the steps that need to be built out prior to the start of next year."
Okay, thank you. And I guess as a follow-up to that, if, since you're talking about further dialogue and steps that will be taken, Dr. Garza, maybe you may be prepared to answer this. Getting back to my example of, you know, a child who was brought before us because of a discipline problem, but was just not successful. There are some children that, and let's talk just about high school now, there are some children that may not be successful in a traditional high school for a variety of reasons. And so, at some point, I know we've talked about this at other meetings, but when might be we be ready to talk about how we could deal with those children who, for whatever reasons, are not...
Yeah, I do think at some point down the road, I know, resource is a constant challenge for us, but I do think we need to look at more alternative... challenge for us, but I do think we need to look at more alternate, vibrant, alternative options for kids, and I'm not talking about disciplinary.
Correct.
I'm talking about kids that are struggling and just, just quite, just the comprehensive school experience is, is just not going to meet their needs for a lot of different reasons. I've talked with some of our principals about it, I think we all recognize that we need more of those kinds of options, not less, so I think down the road, I think that's something we really will have to grapple with, is how do we, how do we provide more different kinds of options for kids that are unique, particularly at the secondary level.
Yes, I think.
And I think we started some of those models when we looked at our on-time graduation project, and we've had some models built out in a couple of high schools that have now traveled to others, I was just talking with Mr. Pearson beforehand, because we've begun to build some smaller settings within the school using the hybrid model of some online and face-to-face with teacher with Apex, and so I believe that those initial projects are being scaled in other places, but we've got to be thoughtful about it and build some, and model some of those, so it, it is work that's going on, but as Dr. Garza said, it's work that we need to do more deeply in the future.
And particularly when we look at kids that are that far behind, it is, it is very difficult for a comprehensive high school to accelerate kids and get them back on, on grade with their age-appropriate peer group, it's really difficult, unless you use some kind of really different structure and different setting, a lot more online support, so I, you know, I think it is a very worthwhile conversation down the road, what do we design, how we get there?
Is it possible just to include that in next steps as our dialogue continues, just to have that out there, so we have that as? Well, yes, I think, you know, when, when we talk about the bigger strategic initiatives, and there's plates and plates of them, but, you know, to have that, to have that out there, I think is, is important to the overall success of our system, I think we all know that, so I would appreciate that.
Thank you, that was about eight minutes, we have Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Reed, then Ms. Hines.
Thank you, yes, I'm excited about how we're moving in the right direction, especially, I think, the records review and bringing the cluster superintendents into the decision, because I think that's where we will do hopefully our, our best work, that our principals working with our families and our cluster superintendents, keeping it at the school level. I, I've been very concerned that, you know, the further we take these families away from our schools, the less likely we're going to have the people who know them best and can follow Virginia law, which is that we are allowed to use discretion and look at mitigating circumstances, and the further we get removed from that, I think the further we've not been able to do our best work with restorative justice. I did forward to my colleagues the language out of Arlington County Public Schools, they are governed by the same laws as we are here in Fairfax. For two years, I have been advocating for the second chance program because their, their results have proven that students are highly successful coming out of it as first-time offenders, very, very low recidivism rates, and yet, even with these revisions, we're not even remarkably close to being there, and I'm disappointed by that. We are not restricted by law to have to send students who used on school property or used on a, on a school trip to have to go to the division superintendent. Again, by the designee, just like with prescription drugs, we, we have made the designee the principal of the school. So, I, I guess my first question would be, looking at the language from Arlington where they specifically say their substance use policy includes used, possession, sale, dispensing, or being under the influence of alcohol, illegal drugs that it can, that will include cocaine, K-2 spice, marijuana, heroin, and other drugs as defined by law. And the second chance program covers all those kids. Now, when I first put forward my SRNR amendment two years ago, I, I wanted to take baby steps with this school system, so I, I went with marijuana because it's our most frequent drug violation that we've been having, and for my colleagues, from what limited information I could pull from our, our data, our discipline reports, for weapons assault and drug slash alcohol violations, which were 553 for the FY 2011 school year, 68% of those cases were drug and alcohol. And, so, I, I mention that because the vast portion of the cases that we're dealing with that are serious, that were typically recommended for expulsion cases, are these drug and alcohol. And, I guess my question is, in our desire to do restorative justice, knowing that our neighbors in Arlington have taken a far broader view with very serious drugs, and the second chance amendment that I put forward was supposed to be for possession and use, I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't even at least honor that in terms of what that, the program is attempting to do. In other words, the language is so narrow in these new revisions, use cannot be on school property, not during school hours, you know, not on a field trip, well, when, I mean, if kids possess the drug and they're under the influence, there's a very high likelihood that the reason they're under the influence and they possess it is because it took place on, in the school, as, as opposed to, well, yeah, they got caught. I mean, if it weren't on school property, then the likelihood that they're going to even find themselves in our system is only, again, if they got identified as under the influence, but in other words, I feel like we're only going halfway there, and I guess it'd be helpful to understand from the work that your committee did, if we know Arlington's been successful, please help me understand, just staying with marijuana only, if we take babies.
Let me, let me talk about that then, okay. There was a lot of conversation about this, weren't there, meeting after meeting about this, because it's, you know, it's, it's difficult, and I think the distinction and the worry was, you know, it's one thing to bring, let's stick to marijuana, marijuana to school, it's yet another thing to say during a school day in front, around other kids, I'm going to use marijuana. And so I think that was the distinction that the committee was trying to make, is as long as they're not affecting anyone around them, meaning during the school day or at a school event, for an example, if they're in the parking lot after school and there's no one else around, they're still qualified for expedited review. But if they're around other kids, it's during the school day, it's in the hallway or in the restroom, that they would not qualify for the expedited review, because they exposed other, other students around them to, to their usage, because it is much more egregious to say, I'm going to be so blatant as to use it at school, versus just, it's in my pocket. And I, I don't know if you call any more of the conversation, Dan, than that, but that was the distinction that our, our principals were comfortable in making, as long as it didn't affect anyone else, you know, didn't affect the school, didn't affect the, the rest of the kids at school, and that's the distinction was made by that language with regard to use.
I appreciate that.
And I was comfortable with that, I thought it made sense.
The, the cases that we typically see when they get caught, where they, it was determined through the interviews and everything that they used it while on the school campus, they're not doing it in the hallways, they typically sneak off to some field or whatever, in a backfield or of, of the school, I, I mean, I, I can't remember where we've really seen cases where they're, the kids are blatantly, because they don't want to get caught, so they're going to go sneak to someplace in the school where they hope to not get caught. But I guess my concern is that if we know that our neighbor next door has been very successful, and this is a way to prevent our kids from being, you know, out of school longer than necessary and, and, you know, going through a, a formal hearing for a first offense, I guess I'm just trying to understand why we don't think that Arlington's been a great model to, to embrace. Like, in other words, I feel like we're still going from the assumption part, well, it just doesn't, we just assume this, or we assume that, well, Arlington's actually showing us that they, they grab up all those kids and it takes them one time to make the mistake. And so, you know, it would really be helpful, once again, if we were sitting here having a dialogue based on data, and so, not to get off track, but I am really upset that going to the website under hearings office, I can't find any links to the reports, nothing. So then I Googled it, and I could find some annual reports, but it doesn't break out what percentage of our, of our offenses to the hearings office were drug and alcohol. I mean, it just, it, in terms of what went to the hearing, it just shows you overall suspendable offenses. So the numbers are really hard to, to really determine what we're working with, but at one point, when Elizabeth Schultz and I were asking to get this quarterly data to understand what the numbers were, it was like a third of our, of our hearings office cases were, were marijuana-related, a third. So, when you think about what we're spending time trying to do, we don't, you and I are sitting here having this conversation, we don't even have data in front of us to, to do that, and I find also curious, since I joined the board, that now we don't have, you know, a presentation that comes from the hearings office on the annual, you know, report, because, so we don't even have this dialogue, so this is great to have the SRNR conversation, but we haven't even a conversation of what do our discipline infractions look like that are the suspendable offenses? So, in the end, I'm, I'm very pleased that we're moving in this direction, I, I want to applaud you, Dr. Garza, and your team for the work you all are doing, but I, I got to say on something that so impacts the largest number of our kids finding their way to the hearings office, and we're just coming up woefully short with, in my mind, no evidence to say that let's, let's do this very conservative approach because of the sentiments of our, of our principals, as opposed to a model over in Arlington that says, guess what, you can actually do it this way, and hopefully it's going to be in the best interest of kids and it won't impact the harm in our schools.
I, I haven't seen any of the data related to the Arlington program, so I'll have to look at their statistics and the results, and so you're saying that's online, available to what success they've had, number of cases that went to them?
I only know from talking with them, and I guess that's what I really wish your committee had been able to do before it guided.
I have visited with them, but I haven't seen a report.
No, I understand, I understand.
Okay.
My point is, before your committee came to us and said, here's what we're going to recommend, it really would have been helpful if they, if, I've been asking for two years for FCPS staff to go talk to Arlington and find out the, the recidivism rates, to have that data, to inform the recommendations you bring to us, and for two years, staff have ignored my request, and we've never gone and gotten that comprehensive information. As, as Kim knows, we now have more data from Arlington, because it's been in place now for two years.
Well, you know, last year you did ask, and Clarence Jones did go and meet with them, and we did report that last year, they only update their data after March, and so he already has an appointment to look at their this year's data. Last year they had, they didn't have full data set because it was their first year, but he does have plans and he did go last year, and so we, we ought to be able to bring that to you. So they, they did not have a full data set at this time last year.
Okay, if we can, I think, I mean, the part of what I heard you saying, I, I thought there was, but I, I know it's been the board's expectation that there would be a report on a quarterly basis on hearings office, so is that?
Coming out.
Yeah, okay, I just, so if we don't have it, then it's coming and I would bring it forward if, and, okay, so we are looking for that. That was more than 10 minutes, so just want to remind people how much time we're taking here. Ms. Reed, then Ms. Hines, and Mr. Moon.
Thank you, I'll be pretty brief here. I wondered if, as you look at the, the data that's available on disciplines and you look at the school-by-school data, is anybody looking at the youth, youth survey data also? Because it seems to me, as I was listening to Megan talk about drug use, and we, we've seen the reported drug use, and we know that only a small portion of kids get caught, let's just be realistic. So I guess I'm wondering, would these new, some of these new procedures and initiatives, would they be also proactive to try to address kind of the root causes of, of some of these issues? Do you understand what I'm trying to get at?
I do, I think that was one of the things that I wanted to read, the description of the position that we're looking for, because we know that, number one, the getting caught is only part of this. Number two, we have been using the pyramid data quite extensively, DeeDee Baylor and Sophia Carpenter from the county go out to the pyramid at the high school level, and the high schools have frequently brought in their elementary, because we know there's a vertical pattern of this behavior. So we are using that data within communities, and that's how a lot of the prevention efforts, we don't have enough money to spray everything, we should explicitly look at what the issues are in different communities, and so we have been using the youth survey data around that.
I'm glad to hear that, and just following up then, about these positions, I was a little confused, so I went back and was trying to figure out, and so, do you all realize that this is the in-school suspension support for high school, that's 1.8 million, that was in Dr. Garza's recommended adjustment to the advertised budget? So we haven't really had much of a discussion about that, so I just wanted to point that out, and if you wanted to use this opportunity, again, to do a little commercial or give us a little more information, aside from what you've already said about it.
Teresa, you want to come up?
Just to, in fact, maybe somebody, just, just to kind of tell us, and I would say at the end of a very long day, and we've talked about a lot of needs, why these positions versus more psychologists or fill-in-the-blank, you know, so if you would just kind of address that, thank you.
So I think one of the things, when we looked at the skills or characteristics that these people should have, they need to have strong interpersonal skills, working with both adults and students, because they need to work with the teachers as well as the students. They need to have the ability also to work with parents and to have coaching skills. They need to advocate for restorative justice, PBA, and cultural proficiency practices. We're looking at not a, as Teresa said, it may be a special education teacher, because in her building she wants to work on disproportionality around those issues, but they have to have the skill set that allows them to work with an admin team, to talk about data, and to talk about the proactive strategies that they would have. So when you look at those resources, the, using, if you look at putting one psychologist in every building, I'm a little worried about scope creep. This is particularly for the intervention, the in-school suspension and engaging kids with proactive before the discipline occurs. Does that help? And I don't know, Teresa, do you want to speak to it?
Well, we'd all love to have another social worker, frankly, it, it is a huge concern, and we had much discussion about this, and I think part of what our kids do and spend a lot of time doing in the ISS room is academics, so we really do need the strong support, someone with all these skills, with the ability to understand teaching strategies across the board.
Thank you, less than four minutes, Ms. Hines, Mr. Moon, and Ms. Smith.
Yeah, well, as long as you're there, Teresa, hi, and thank you for coming tonight, all of the principals, after your long day, we appreciate it. I wanted to touch a little bit on the, the in-school suspension, the need for highly-qualified people, because, you know, several years ago, we started the Support on Suspension Program in Vienna in the community center, and our goal was not only to keep the kids safe and busy while they're out of school, but also to make sure that when they went back, they were up to speed as much as possible on their academics, that they hadn't lost, hadn't lost ground while they were losing time, because we looked at that in the research we did, it showed that, that helped with recidivism, they're more likely to stay in school if they, if they go back on track. So I guess my only, and also, you know, it's very important for us to have that, I think what you're talking about is that, that strong working relationship with the teachers, which the students' teachers, and I think that someone who's just kind of parked in a room babysitting is not going to have that kind of dialogue with the teachers, so I don't know that I'm really asking you to say anything more about that, except that I think it is a, a very good use of our money for these kids, so I, I support it, so thank you. I had a quick question, I think, on page 15 of the slide, just the word secondary, and I'm sorry if you explained it and I missed it, but what, what does the word secondary in parentheses mean? Sorry.
It means middle and, and high school.
Oh, sorry.
So that it's just distinguishing it from an elementary.
Okay. I thought there was some, gotcha.
It's more, it's more discretion around that, because you have to look at the age of the child versus middle and high school.
Okay, I thought maybe it had something to do with the type of, I don't know, okay, never mind, thank you. All right, and then, you know, we've, we've, I think a lot of us have touched on it, but it seems like you're trying to deal with this tension between discretion. to deal with this tension between discretion and consistency, right? Discretion at the school level and consistency across the system. And I think it is important to give the principals more latitude in a lot of areas. But then, of course, that can exacerbate our disproportionality problem, you know? So it sounds like you're trying to find ways of dealing with that. I was kind of wondering, on the records review, I understand how that can help, but I wonder if there's a thought that, and maybe I missed it, that the records review might be required if we find that there's a school that is out of step in some way? And then the CAS could say, you know, on all of these types of cases, we want you to come to us?
We actually had that discussion at our ALG or LT meeting, I can't remember which one. Because when we looked at our quarterly data, we did find some schools that were in that category. And so the CAS all felt that this was a worthwhile dialogue, to say there are certain schools where there has to be closer look at their practices. They might come to me and say, we need retraining on FBAs or BIP, which is functional behavior. So there was the desire to be able to look at cases, but also patterns.
Okay. So they will do it? Then the CASes will, if they feel, yeah, and that's a conversation y'all are having. Good. The last thing, I was just going to say, I think the language change is good, helpful for parents. I think one of the risks, maybe, and I just wanted to ask about this, if the language is softened to, you know, a referral to the district superintendent, right? Is there a risk that the parents might not take it seriously enough? I mean, is there going to be something in the letter?
Right. The letter will talk about that the ranges of options available to the hearings office will, the discipline will range anywhere from a potentially to a reassignment, all the way to expulsion. So it will say in the letter, because we're obligated to say that in the letter. So it just won't be the lead, you know, we're expelling you, because that happens so rarely, right? So it will state in the letter what the range of legal options available to the hearings office will present.
Great. I think that's important for notice to the parents, yeah. But it is a good change. And then finally, we've also talked about our language as we report out to the community on our decisions on these cases, and how we often say, we, you know, voted to expel a student when actually we didn't, in the common understanding of that sense. So we'll be changing our language as we report out as well. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. About four minutes. Appreciate that. Mr. Moon, and Ms. Smith, and Mr. Velkoff.
I'll try and do within five minutes. One question regarding appeal to the school board on suspension. It is my understanding that under the current SRNR, if the number of days of suspension is at least 10 days or more, then that's appealable to the school board, correct? So 10 days is-
Yes. If it's-
Now, use the mic. Okay. Yes, you're correct, except it's 11 days or more.
So 11 days or more?
11 days or more. So any time that a student is suspended for 11 days or more, even if they're returned to school, the parent can still appeal that what's considered a long-term suspension. So for example, you might have a student who's going through the process, who ends up being suspended for 12 days, and they're allowed to go back to school on day 13.
Okay, thank you. That's good enough for me, since that's eating on my time. All right. Thank you. So you are-
Nothing personal, of course.
Nothing personal. Your suggested steps, recommended changes, do not change that? Or does, okay, thank you. Secondly, one of the changes that I saw, which is made the discretionary on the part of school principal, to refer to the superintendent, is, on my strike-through version, is on page 23 at the top, theft or attempted theft of another person's property or money by the use of force or threat. The theft or attempted threat of another person's property or money by the use of force, force or threat, in my own definition, that is, we call that a robbery. Robbery is defined as such, taking somebody else's property with the use of either weapon or force, or threat of use of weapon or force, something to that effect. Is that-
Yeah, I'm going to have Dana come back up. I think, I know why we have it there.
My concern is that's when, whether I hear robbery, it's a very serious offense.
You're correct. That is robbery. In the current SRNR, all thefts, because any kind of misconduct could have resulted in a recommendation for expulsion, all thefts, regardless of whether they were theft through robbery, were dealt with in the same line. So what we did in this document is we distinguished between a theft of property without fear or force, which is that the expectation is that that would be handled at the school level, and a robbery, which is that second tier, where the principal would have the discretion to refer that to the division superintendent immediately because of the seriousness.
Thank you for the explanation. From my perspective, I do not know whether we've gone far enough, because I consider robbery to be very, very serious offense, even in criminal sense. Okay? So I may have an amendment. Thirdly, I have always been concerned about, you know, students being out of classroom or out of school while the appeal is pending. And that's called the Moon Amendment from, in the last years. And I'm going to go back to that, that whether your suggested change is anything to what we have been doing so far, insofar as while the appeal is pending for whatever offense that may be, if the principal determines that student's presence not in the separate in-school suspension classroom with additional staffing, staff we may provide through budget adoption, whether the presence, continuing presence of the particular student in his or her regular classrooms, if a principal feels that that's not going to pose danger, whether that will be allowed.
And I believe that that amendment still stands, and that has happened this year. So where they don't feel that there is danger, and the hearing process is going on, we have had principals return the student to the regular classroom.
Will it be possible for us to know that the number of such cases, or is that so small, or is-
It is very small.
Very small number.
It would be an N-number. But when it was used, it was, I think, used appropriately.
And I basically believe that, you know, holding a, you know, any student while the appeal is pending, so-called innocent until the case is over with, and, you know, keeping the particular student in regular classrooms as much as possible, as long as the student doesn't oppose any danger to others.
And I think when we look at training, and, you know, Dana works with us for the August training of principals, there's a lot of work to do in clarity, because just in the conversation, we did so much change last year, that it's time for a refresh of those changes as well as these. And so we can incorporate that. Because in one conversation, I was on a conference call with three principals, and some knew about the Moon Amendment, and some did not. So I think it's a continued education.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. That was about six minutes, believe it or not. And Ms. Smith, and Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that I would hope would happen, if the board does approve the extra positions, is that there was some kind of evaluation and oversight of what happens. Because you want to ensure that it's doing what we think, that there is work for them in what's happening in the schools. But I think that that is something, especially when it's new, that there needs to be some kind of oversight to see, did it do what we wanted? Should it be a full position in every school? I don't know about details and variance, but I would hope we would evaluate it. I want to follow on on something Pat said, that it is a concern for me, that as you go to more local control and local decision-making with the high schools, you don't want to end up in a situation where we get such disparity. So I think training and oversight is going to be vital. I don't know if that comes system-wide, cluster-wide, or whatever, but that is a concern of mine, too, that we ensure that we don't get pockets where things are so different than other schools. I do appreciate the fact that we aren't going to expedite kids that use on school property during the school day. I think that it is important to be able to keep our schools safe and to keep marijuana use down in the school. So I appreciate that that has stayed that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I think that's the record, a little over one minute. Mr. Velkoff.
Ms. Evans, you mentioned that this was a Xerox. 27 years ago, I interviewed at IBM, and I told the interviewing manager that I had a Xerox of my resume, and he corrected me that I had a photocopy. I think it's fair to say, without contradiction, that I and the Fairfax Zero Tolerance Reform, that there is no love lost between us. But I do hope that Carolyn Hemingway, and Michelle Menipace, and Janet Otterston, and John Farrell, take some satisfaction in what is happening today. Because I think that they did shine a light on an issue, and this may not be the outcome that that organization hoped for, and it may not have occurred on the timeline that they asked for, but I do think that they bear a considerable amount of credit for this happening. So I just want to conclude by thanking some people. And Teresa, thank you for staying. I wish Jay and Jane were still here, but I understand-
Going back to school activities. PT SO meeting, yes.
Yes. So-
That brings up, Dan Paris unfortunately had to step out, too. His father is very ill, and so they needed to check on him. So I just wanted to point.
So unfortunately, I don't know all of our employees. It's unequal, the number of people that I know. And of course, Teresa, we go back many years. So I know it's not fair to the rest of the employees, but I know of you and Jay and Jane, you exemplify the very best of FCPS and our values. And I know you love your people. And I know you love the children. And I know all the principals in our system come to school every day because they love children. And even when you have to make decisions that are very difficult for them, that you still love them. And so I just want to thank you for, first of all, what you do every day, and then for participating in this process and helping guide it. And because I know that about the three of you, that you have participated in this, it gives me great confidence that what we're doing here is the right thing. So I really do thank you. And then Karen, I actually want to say a couple words to you, if I may. Thank you for recognizing that this is a problem that needed to be addressed. And you've created a climate where this kind of progress could happen. And our school system really needed it, and I think it's going to contribute greatly to a healing that our county needs. So I just want to thank you personally. And I think this whole thing that we're seeing here is a demonstration of the good that can happen when we trust the people in the school system to love their children and do the best by them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. A little over three minutes. Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. And I'll be brief. I think, Ted, you put it very eloquently, and I would just like to say thank you as well. I think we needed to take control and be proactive on this issue, and I think this shows our true commitment to doing that. So I'm very appreciative. And I think Dr. Garza saw a situation where we had a clear division between community and school staff, and that was something that needed to be healed. So I'm very proud of you for taking this on, along with Dr. Dockery. I hope you've been able to sleep a little more this year, but clearly, you're still very engaged in this, so thank you so much.
When you look around the table, too, Mary Ann, Grady, and Dana have been editing, because these changes have to be reviewed and searched throughout the entire document, they are quite incredible. They have eagle eyes, but they also just have a commitment to work together, and they'll be, oh, I found this. Kathy has an eagle eye, too. She found two typos that I got to bring to Mary Ann's attention. But Grady, Dana, Mary Ann, and Clarence have been just incredible.
I'm going to speak, that was about a minute. I'm going to speak for just a minute. I've got actually some questions. The first one was, on the elementary school required records review, first time, I know we've had some conversations about our five, six, and seven-year-olds, and how active they are, and concerned we are. The records review, what is that, what's that timeframe normally take? Obviously, the teacher or the system identifies something, and then they send a record, and it's like a team meeting that they have? Or what, can you just give some sense of that process internally, briefly, please?
So what we want is the typical interventions that you have within your PBIS, including up to the functional behavior analysis and a behavior plan for a student. And when those things are in place, and you continue to have difficulty, then you'd look for other resources across the system. When you have a pattern that you're frustrated with, just like I got the email from the cluster assistant superintendent today, then we will have business rules in a packet that would say, this needs to go to the cluster, we need to have a conversation with the parents. And as Dan said, there are at least three or four things that need business rules, and it's our commitment to build those out as we go forward, so that we do have the same kinds of cases coming forward, not one case coming just because, and I told you, we have some school that doesn't automatically go, you need to have interventions in place that go along with our PBIS first, and then that happens.
And that process, and those rules clearly will get pushed down to the elementary school level, so teachers in particular understand what their options are. I mean, that's the number-one thing I hear at the elementary school level, is their classroom, within their classroom, kids who are acting out severely, and the challenge that that creates for them to-
And I really think that goes into administrator training. If they're making the call, because we have behavior intervention teachers by pyramid, and if they're not making the call to get that person in, we have central IAs for special ed and general ed, where we're pushing them out to those. So that's at an administrator level, that needs to be more apparent.
Okay. And my other question, I have just two other broad ones. One, the next one is on alternative school referrals, I call coaching, guidance, parent involvement. I don't think, and I don't know if this document gets at this, and I don't know if there's a way to do that, so I'm going to throw it out broadly, and you can respond. We know that our alternative schools are for more kids, and why utilize our alternative schools, because there are more kids who aren't successful in our regular schools. How do we move that conversation, or how do we address that, before it becomes a discipline issue that we obviously have to address at that point? Is there some systems and processes that you're doing?
There are, and it's still, if you go to Mountain View graduation, and you hear somebody say, I asked my, I don't know if you remember, last year, I asked my counselor about going to Mountain View, and they say, you'll come right back. You know, so we still have a great deal of work around that. When you understand that some schools understand the options, some counselors know all of the options, and some don't. And that's not too dissimilar from special education. You should have knowledgeable about all of the continuum of services available, and we have to get that at the counseling level. We're actually working with Marcy Neal and our inter-agency programs on that, so that she can work with the director of student services, so that more, not more, all schools are aware of all options.
I think, and that's part of this records review, and granted, we do need to outline the process. But as we've talked about, you know, there's a recognition, these are all our schools. These alternative schools are our schools. So it shouldn't require always, for, you know, for a problem to go all the way to the hearings office before we can accommodate a move to another school. So that's what the purpose of the records review is for, in my mind, because in some cases, just sitting down with the parent and say, parent, first of all, as long as we've done everything in our power at campus level, and I think our cluster folks can assure that, have we done everything at that school level to meet that child's needs? But if we have a campus that might better meet their needs, I think there's a way to more collaboratively work with the parent, to suggest- more collaboratively work with the parent, to suggest the change versus, we're sending you through this process where the, you know, you're going to get reassigned. But, so to me, I think it has a different tenor to the conversation, is to talk about some available options that might be beneficial for their child. So to me, that's the ultimate purpose of the records review, if you do that well.
And that's exactly what I, I don't think that's understood well enough, and I would, I think we need more outreach on more, and particularly planting those seeds early enough that parents don't feel like you're just telling them that to get the kid out of my school, which is what the reaction is, I know, by some parents. So I strongly urge us to do a better job of broadcasting, advertising that process. And the last point I had was disproportionality by, disproportionality. And I know this is, this is really a sensitive issue. My reaction to this is disproportionality by what? Because I think the core issue for me is by incident? Because if you have an incident, are two people being treated similarly regardless of their ethnic background, or their, you know, their special needs, or whatever that might be? And is it really looked at that way? Or are we truly looking at it more in terms of, you know, more special education kids are getting this particular consequence versus non-special education kids? In other words, if we don't align the kind of incident with, you know, with the issue that we're talking, called disproportionality, then I don't think we can really get a true look at what that is. And is that how this is approached, or help me understand that better?
I don't think we have...
I'm closing on six minutes.
Right. Well, I don't think we have the data around incident. So I think what you're asking is, what would it look like if we did? And I think that's something we'd have to, we'd have to do the spreadsheets in a different way. It's something that I can work with Mary Ann on, so.
But I think it does go a long way when we look at the campus level, and as long as we have reports that help us identify the principal and the cluster, and at my level, look at campuses, and we can identify, oh, my goodness, are we referring a lot more special education students in this circumstance? Or maybe more students of a particular ethnic group? Then I think we can respond to that in a different way. You know, so I think that will help us go a long way next year. I think the principals, talked about this quite a bit, is really helping educate the principals about what's happening at the campus will go a long way, I think.
And I know we had one go back, Ms. Schultz.
Well, and I'm glad my go back is after you, because the basic statistic of disproportionality is to the number of students who are involved in that incident to the percentage of students in the overall population. And it's boys, it's boys eighth, 10th grade, boys eighth, 10th grade with special education identification, boys eighth, 10th grade special identification minority. That's it. I mean, you know, disproportionality is disproportionality. So that's something that I'm very passionate about, and you and I, you know, can talk about that offline. My go back would be, maybe I'm going to get, sometimes asking a question a different way gets a different, a different answer. On the use issue of, you know, possession versus use. In what case would a student be using and fall under those circumstances and not be on school property during school hours? So when would it apply? I guess my question is...
Okay. When would it not apply? When would it not apply? This has to do with when the situation qualifies for an expedited review?
When, under what case for expedited review would a student's use apply, given the fact that you can't be using it on school grounds or during school hours?
We have several examples. Go ahead, give them. Excuse me. I can give you some examples that we would see most frequently that would fall into that category. One is a case where it might be a weekend, late in the evening perhaps, where a student decides to use marijuana, and they go to a place that's familiar to them, and that's their school.
But that's on school grounds? And that said, not on school grounds, not during school hours?
Not on school grounds during the school day. So that would be a time...
Okay, so it's an and. So the only thing that's excluded is if you stay on campus...
During the school day.
During school hours.
And you're using at school during the school day, that would not be...
So the only case that would apply is at school, not during school hours?
There's another case that readily comes to mind, that we see a few of these every year, and that's for a student who perhaps is on an overnight field trip and is using marijuana in the privacy of their hotel room, again, late at night.
But that's a school-sponsored event. That doesn't count.
But it's not in the course of the activity. Certainly, if it was in the course of the activity, then that would be a different circumstance.
That's not what this says. This says during a school activity, so that's a school sponsor. So I'm trying to get to, when would, so how does this expand what we were doing? Because it says during school, and I didn't get the and, and I don't think it actually says and, but now I understand.
Okay, it's on page 14, and it says...
There's no page numbers.
Oh, sorry. Use of marijuana so long as use was not on school property during the school day, or during a school-sponsored activity.
That's not the right one.
So, okay, so it's, but it's and, that's a big word. Conjunction, junction, what's your function? So during, during school hours, on school property and during school hours, so you don't get an expedited review under that. But I'm still back to, when would you get it? Because the school, the school field trip is a school-sponsored activity. So I'm trying to figure out, under what circumstances this would apply? And the only thing I'm hearing is maybe...
So the circumstances are not during the school day, and you're on the school grounds, you could have an expedited review.
Okay. So...
So the example that was given was a perfect example, in that I'm driving, I go up to the school at midnight, you know, and a bunch of us are, you know, they're smoking marijuana in the parking lot, and it's their first time, get caught. Or on the weekend, on school property.
Okay, so it's on school property, but not during school hours is the, so it's a very limited expansion. And the reason I have a problem, now that I understand that the and is in there, is now you're rewarding the kid and getting an expedited review if they leave campus. So if they go to the back of the school property during school hours and use it, they don't get the expedited review, but as long as they leave campus, and it's a first-time offense, so they're better off, the greater reward is for the greater offense, in my opinion, of leaving campus. So if they leave campus and smoke it during school hours, then they get an expedited review because they weren't on school property. So that's a, that's a concern I have, now that I understand where the conjunction falls, is that I think it's a more grievous offense to leave the campus during school hours than if they sat in a baseball dugout, for example.
Okay, well, that's, you can have that perspective, and then any...
We'll look at that, Grady will help us.
Okay, and they'll send kind of response to confirm or deny what you're saying. Okay. And Mr. Velkoff, please give it short. Thank you.
I guess I just want to go back to the fact that last year, based on our task force recommendations, which is that the community task force wanted us to adopt the Arlington Second Chance Program. And I modified it, and I kept it just to, you know, possession and use, not distribution. It would only be marijuana, wouldn't be, I mean, I brought it so far in because it was the goal to take baby steps with this school system. And then I discovered that the language that I went to staff and said, this is what I want to do, and when you even look on page 20 of the regulation, where it says, use or possession of a controlled substance marijuana, blah, 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 this is what will happen to you. And that's what the Second Chance was supposed to be built on. But then, what I, what came was, it just said possession. So use, even though in our SRNR was always possession, use were one thing, distribution was another. And that was always my intent. And then when we started seeing closed-session cases, and I started saying, wait a minute, first offense, why isn't this count? And it was, well, use wasn't ever included in the language. So I sort of feel like, in terms of finding, you know, the common ground, trying to take baby steps with the system, use got left out, even though it's never been separated from possession in the way we've done our SRNR. And, and now, when it's come back to us for this year's revision, it's use with all the caveats that Ms. Schultz just pointed out. So unlike some of my colleagues, I don't feel like we're actually honoring, A, the work of the task force, or even honoring the intent of what last year this board had decided to do, which was possession, use was one thing, distribution was another. And we've got principals who didn't want the Second Chance, period. So why would I now feel comfortable saying, well, they advised the superintendent, well, let's do use with all these caveats? Either we embrace the difference between distributing versus possession use, or we don't. But I guess I really hope, Dr. Garza, please, if you can, even go talk to Superintendent Murphy. He's a firm believer in their Second Chance Program. Possession and use, as Ms. Schultz even pointed out, it's correct. We're just going to end up having those kids who, the first time that they get caught, as Ms. Reed pointed out, we're not thinking that they've never used it before, but yes, first time get caught. What if that's all we need to do? Put them through the program, Second Chance, and we don't have any more recidivism with them? But we're missing a whole group of kids with this.
Understand, and obviously, there can be amendments to what we've done, if people feel differently about what's been presented to us. Ms. Heinz?
Well, that was just my question. So going forward, you know, rather than us debating fine points at this point, what's the next step, then? If we have an amendment, or...
Well, we talked about, this is, this is coming forward, and I'm assuming this will come forward as is, and we have the opportunity to modify this. We're going to, June 5th, I think, was our next new business date.
June 5th is your new business.
And June 26th will be the date that we vote on this. So I don't know how the chairman wants to handle, is there somebody who's coordinating that activity, or trying to put together?
What activity?
What?
What activity? Posting it?
So what we're, I think what we're looking for is a deadline to the board of when they would get amendments posted, so there's enough time to have board member and community reaction to any amendments.
I mean, always, always, as the chairman, or as a board member, if somebody has an amendment to make, and definitely sure about that, the sooner the better, sooner the better. But I'm going to honor our normal process, which is, you know, if he could give us at least, is it 48 hours before?
Yes, our minimum is 48 hours.
Yeah, 48 hours before the actual, actual date of...
That's the governance manual.
Governance manual, because for 48 hours prior to the meeting, for amendment to be posted. Absolutely, that's what I said. If you know that you are making an amendment, just let board members know.
And there are maybe some follow-ups that we need to provide. You know, there are a couple of questions, like your question, I need to go back and think about that and look at it, and I know we all will. So we'll have some follow-up potentially for you all as soon as possible. And then we can get, get the timelines together for amendments for you.
I mean, again, timeline-wise, we have a governance manual, which governs the way we operate. It says 48 hours, that's the minimum. But we can also entertain the, any amendment at the table, too. That may not be as convincing to other, you know, persuasive to other board members.
And the reality is, we have six weeks now, so there really isn't much, we ask, we need some more information, but there really isn't much excuse why that shouldn't come at least a week ahead of time. So even though we have our minimums. Ms. Smith?
I mean, the one concern I want to make for amendments for a document like this is, it's a little bit different with the legal implications of it. So, I mean, as much as you're saying the governance manual says 48 hours, I think with something like this, board members need to have it prepared in enough time to have staff to have a time to review it. So I would love the chairman to, not today, but come out with a date that gives staff enough time to react, to have a suggested date. As Mr. Stork said, we have tons a week, you know, there's a lot of time here.
I think board members have heard you and, you know, Mr. Stork, to be mindful of, you know, what would be required to have really a good amendment for the board members' consideration. You know, need to have the language, work with the staff, you know, probably a division counsel, a lot of times will have to look into what the legal implication, what's in compliance with the laws, whether there is any conflict even within our SRNR. So someone says six weeks, we stay up six weeks, okay? That's plenty of time. So start working on it right away with the staff and board members.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it would be helpful, maybe, to have, you know, some guidance, a little bit more than a week before, because, you know, this is very complicated. It still brings up emotions in the community, and I'm not going to feel comfortable, you know, if we get to the board table and we are drafting something at the board table, I am not going to vote for it. And what that will look like is that I was against whatever it was the person who proposed it wanted to do, and that's not necessarily the case. So I, especially on this one, asking that if anybody has amendments, that they bring them as early as possible, so that we can know that staff has looked at it, and we've asked all the questions, and we've, you know, so.
And I would ask, because we have a work session on the 16th of June, Mr. Chairman, is it possible to at least have 30 minutes in that work session to ask anybody who has amendments to, to make sure that that's, they present them by then? So that would be a way of driving this a little bit earlier in the process, it'd be 10 days before we, we voted on those. So it would be a nice way of...
Chairman will honor the board members as a request, if there is a majority support for that.
Request that we have, we at least allow 30 minutes for SRNR amendments. We have an opportunity to discuss those as part of that work session. So people have a chance to air them and get feedback, and then, and then hopefully to then finalize them.
Yeah, what I'm afraid is, if there are multiple amendments, whether 30 minutes will ever be enough to have a discussion on those amendments? But I can, I can, I can, I will work with us, you know, Madame Clark, to see whether we can put 30 minutes in there, all right? But I'm not going to be able to promise more than that at this point in time.
Okay.
Can I add something to that? I think the, to me, the importance of that would be to get them on the table, not to debate them.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Any, I don't hear any final...
Could I have the last word?
Oh. Ms. Evans, yes?
And I just wanted to follow up on what Megan said. My interpretation of what we did last year was the same as Megan's, and I'm looking back at the language now, and I'm seeing we, you know, we differentiated between possession and distribution. We were kind of silent, really, on, on use. And so adding this language makes us no longer silent on, on use. I think we, it was open enough, so we had interpretation. And I just think we need to, you know, whatever way we decide to go, we need to be clear that, that this, this is a change. Some might consider it a clarification, but other people might consider it a step back from what we did before. So I think we, I don't know if this was an official next step, but if it wasn't, then I would urge us to get whatever information it was that, that Clarence is going to get from Arlington. I would be interested in seeing that data, and any other information about that program, you know, since we're collecting it anyway. I would, I would ask that to be a next step.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no other comments, Mr. Moon, do you have anything to...
I mean, I just wanted to congratulate two meeting managers.
Right on time, yes.
Dr. Garza?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, compliment the team. I will tell you, every time I'm around our principals, I'm impressed. And our, these folks put a lot of time into this, on top of everything else they have going on. I don't know how many meetings we have, but it seemed like a lot. And I know you are meeting outside of those meetings, trying to get input and consensus, and I do believe at least the conversations were very helpful in terms of creating consensus and consistency. I think that at least the conversations were helpful with all the principals. Would you agree with that, Teresa? And so I want to thank you all for the time, energy, and the leadership you've, you've provided on this issue. And my goodness, Kim, and, you know, all the rest of our team, who's worked very hard, and Grady and others, and Dana, my goodness, writing this is very tedious, and so I just want to say thank you to everyone.
Oh, next steps. Do we have any? Do we have, I didn't, did you need?
No, just the Arlington Second.
The Arlington one, I know, yeah, we, I think we got it. Okay.
Board members, just one announcement. Budget public hearing is going to be just for one night tomorrow. I think we have 81 speakers.
Do we have food?